Peace be upon you, this is Said Mirza from readingourreason.com and we're gonna be continuing on with our Quran study session. I believe this is session number seven and we left off at chapter five, verse fifty. So let's begin there. Um, in the name of God, the almighty and merciful, I seek refuge in God from Satan, the accursed. This is Brother Gans translation of Quran Complete Revelation and I'm on reader dot corona dot com. Let's begin. Verse fifty-one. Oh, you who heed warning, take not the rabbinic Jews and the Christians as allies. They are allies of one another. And whoso takes them as allies among you, he is of them. God guides not the wrongdoing people. And thou seest those in whose hearts is disease competing among them, saying, we fear lest the reversal befall us. But it may be that God will bring victory or a command from him, and they will become of what they conceal within their souls remorseful. Now, this is addressing the recipient of Quran Muhammad. Uh, as in Muhammad, you see that the those in whose hearts is a disease. Are competing among them, basically making allies with the Jews and the Christians because they think that by making allies with them. Uh, they will be victorious. And if they don't compromise with them, then a reversal will befall them. As in, they don't trust God, basically. And those who heed warning will say, are these they who swore by God their strongest oaths that they were with you? Their works have become vain and they have become losers. Oh, you heed warning, whoso among you renounces his doctrine, God will bring a people whom he will love and who will love him. Humble towards the believers, stern towards the false claimers of guidance, striving in the cause of God and fearing not the reproach of a critic. That is the bounty of God he gives to whom he wills, and God is encompassing and knowing. So basically, if you renounce the deen of God, uh, which is not the religion of Islam. That's the, the deen of God is encapsulated in the Quran itself and um. Basically what it is, is to submit to God, uh, in an honest manner, in the true manner. And to believe in his peruse, to believe in his messengers, to uh, follow the God, the commandments of God in the Quran. Uh, and to hold fast to the, the Quran that God has sent down. This is really the core of the, the doctrine. So God will bring a people whom he will love and who will love him, not love the messengers. This is the. Muslims unfortunately, they don't really try to understand what the Quran is talking about. See, all love is towards God. All um supplication is towards God. God is our ally and protector. So these people, they are humble towards the believers and they are stern towards the Al Kafirun. Which is the false claimers of guidance or the religionists, the false, uh, the, the people who say they are guided, but they're not guided. They don't follow God's scripture exclusively and they strive in the cause of God. Uh, and fear not the reproach of a critic. So they don't care what anyone else thinks about them. They do, they do what is commanded by God. That is the bounty of God he, he gives to whom he wills, and God is encompassing and knowing. Your ally is but God and his messenger, and those who heed warning, those who uphold the duty and render the purity, and they are lowly. And whoso takes God and his messenger and those who heed warning as ally, the party of God, they will be the victors. So now this obviously means that the people at the time of the recipient of the Quran, when he was living. And when he Muhammad, who was a messenger of God, uh, that we, that the believers are to take only God and his messenger. Now the messenger is not with us anymore. Messenger is dead. Uh, so what we have here is God and those who heed warning. Um, they are the allies of the believers and these are the people who, uh, the believers, they uphold the duty. And they render the purity and they are lowly. This has nothing to do with the ritual prayer that Muslims love to celebrate. This has to do with upholding the commandments of God and one of the commandments of God is his worship. Um, but uh, to say that all worship is duty is doing a disservice to this word, Salat. And when I'm saying worship, I mean in the sense of glorifying God and remembering God, praising him, seeking help from him. And uh, reading the scripture, these are all the duty. Uh, these, this all encompasses one of the duties. And this is not a ritual movement. This is, this has nothing to do with what the Muslims are doing, basically. So the party of God, they will be the victors. Oh, you heed warning, take not those who take your doctrine in mockery and fun. Among those given the writ before you and the atheist as allies and be in prudent fear of God if you be believers. And when you call to the duty, they take it in mockery and fun, for it is that they are, they are people who do not reason. Say thou, oh doctor of law, do you resent us save that we believe in God and what was sent down to us and what was sent down before? And that most of you are perfidious? Say thou, shall I inform you worse than that as a recompense with God? He whom God cursed and with whom he is, he was wrought and made of them apes and swine and servants of idols. Those are worse than standing and further astray from the right path. So the curse of God, this is uh. There's no going back. Once God curses you, you're finished. I mean, God cursed Shaitan as well. Um, then you're, you're done. So just understand that this is, this is the ultimate punishment. You're misguided. Verse sixty-one, and when they come to you, they say, we believe, but they entered in denial and they left in it. And God best knows what they were concealing. Who are these people who came to uh, the believers and they said, we believe? These are the people who are competing with each other. In those, in those, in those, uh, in their hearts is a disease, see? It's, you have to keep the, the context in mind, like who is this talking about? So these are the people who, who's, in whose hearts is disease, who make allies with the Christians and the Jews. So when they come to the believers, uh, they say. We believe, but they entered in denial, as in they never believed in the first place and they left in it and God best knows what they were concealing. Uh, they're concealing their, their denial. And thou seest many of them competing in sin and enmity and their consumption of illicit gain. Evil is what they do. Now, this is not just something to the messenger. I mean, you have to try to figure out, okay, who are these people in the timeframe that we are here? Like you go out and you meet people, they say, we believe, but then you see them, what their actions are. So you have to kinda try to figure out who, what's being taught, who these people are, because they're here. They're alive and well. And these, these uh, archetypes are always present across the ages. Oh, that the rabbis and the religious scholars had but forbidden their speaking sin and their consumption of illicit gain. Evil is what they were working. So this is the duty of the rabbis and the religious scholars. It's not to give speeches, flowery speeches. It's actually to forbid the speaking of sin. And the consumption of illicit gain. Uh, this would mean uh, running scams, schemes or even uh, uh, eating usury. So this is the job of the religious scholars and the rabbis to do this, not to ask for donations for creating more masajids. Verse sixty-four. And the rabbinic Jews say, the hand of God is fettered. This is their speaking sin. Fettered are their hands and cursed are they for what they say. Nay, his hands are spread wide. He spends how he wills. And there increases many of them in inordinacy and denial what was sent down to thee from thy lord. And we have cast among them enmity and hatred until their resurrection. Whenever they lit the fire of war, God extinguished it. And they strive in the land for corruption and God loves not the workers of corruption. Uh, if you wanted to test this verse, go and tell the Muslims what the Quran says. And that they should follow it and you'll see that it'll increase them in inordinacy and denial. And had the doctor of law believed and been in prudent fear, we would have removed their evil deeds from them and made them enter the gardens of bliss. See, the doctor of law, these are the scholars, the rabbis, the religious leaders, these are the men who, uh, you know, claim to be um. To God's chosen, they, they claim to have knowledge of the law and that they are very humble and pious. Uh, if you look in the Quran for how this word is used, this phrase is used, Ahlul Kitab, which in Brother Gans is translating as Doctor of Law. You'll see that the, most of these doctors of law are corrupt and they are, uh, they don't believe. Um, so this is what God is saying that had they believed, because if they had believed, see, they would have forbidden. The speaking of sin and the consumption of illicit gain to their followers, but they don't do that. What they're interested in is giving flowery speeches and telling you about, you know, the Hadith and just, just completely. Stuff, stuff that has nothing to do with what the Quran is talking about. And had they upheld the Torah and the gospel and what was sent down to them from their lord, they would have eaten from above them and from under their feet. Among them is a bared community, but many of them evil is what they do. Okay. So had they upheld, see, doctor of law, see, that's why the brother Gans is translating as Ahlul Kitab is doctor of law. Because that is the duty of the Ahlul Kitab, the doctor of the law. They are the specialists in the law. They're supposed to uphold the scripture. So in the case of the Muslims, had they upheld the, the Quran, they don't, uh, the, the, I'm talking about the scholars of Islam. Anyway, in this scenario is talking about obviously, because the doctor of law was a class that was uh. Uh, in the case of the religion of Islam, it had not coalesced. It wasn't, it wasn't there because. Uh, Muhammad was coming with the scripture, see? So but the, this doctor of the law, this class was already well established. And well funded and well, um, and had importance. Um, this, these were the priests and the rabbis. So it says, and had they upheld the Taurat and the Injil, which uh, the word Taurat, but again, it's translating as Torah and Injil as gospel. Um, we need to be careful a little bit here because when the Quran says Taurat, it, it is not. The, the scripture that the Jews claim, uh, and similarly the Injil is not the scripture that the Christians claim. As in. We don't know what these books are. They were at the time of the messenger, Taurat and Injil, but now they're lost and. I'm not gonna get into, you know, the nuts and bolts or why, um, what these books are and where we can find them. Because it's unimportant. We have the Quran. It contains in it the full, the full writ of God, the Al Kitab. So the Quran is really all we need at this point. We believe in the Quran and we implement it. Anyway, and what was sent down to them from their lord, they would have eaten from the, above them for, as in God would have showered them with his blessings. But because they didn't uphold their scriptures, which is the same with the scholar of Islam, um, evil is what they do. Verse sixty-seven, oh messenger, convey thou what has been sent down to thee from thy lord. And if thou do it not, then thou wilt not have conveyed his message and God will protect thee from men. God guides not the people of the false claimers of guidance. So here we have a clear um, understanding of what the role of the messenger is. See, Muslims think the role of the messenger was to issue laws and, you know, um. Teach them, but here we see what the messenger's um, role is. It is to convey what has been sent down to him from his lord. See, another place says Balagh, which means communication. Uh, so this was his role to convey, to deliver the message. And if he has not done this, then he has not conveyed God's message. The messenger always comes with a message. He cannot take anything out from the message. He cannot insert anything into the message. He has to deliver it verbatim. This is the duty of the messenger. Verse sixty-eight, say thou, now this is Qul, which in the Quran, there's many places in the Quran where. Uh, there's an imperative to the messenger, uh, which uh, which he was supposed to say. And this is a recording in the Quran. So this is something that the messenger was told to say and he said it. Oh, doctor of law, you have nothing to stand upon until you uphold the Torah and the gospel and what was sent down to you from your lord. And there increases many of them in inordinacy and denial what was sent down to thee from thy lord. So grieve thou not over the people of the false claimers of guidance. See, the, the Hala Kitab, doctor of law, you have nothing to stand upon until you uphold the Torah and the gospel. Similarly, the scholars of Islam, who are the doctor of the law, um, they have nothing to stand upon until they uphold the Quran, only the Quran. Verse sixty-nine, those who heed warning and those who hold to Judaism and the Sabaeans and the Christians. Whoso believes in God and the last day and works righteousness, no fear will be upon them, nor will they grieve. Uh, this here is the key. This is, you know, all, all speeches aside, um. All sectarianism aside, this is really what the Quran is saying, that whoso believes in God. Those who heed warning, the Lazzina Amanu, this is those who believe in God in the last day and those who hold to Judaism and the Sabaeans and the Christians. Doesn't matter what religion you belong to, you, if you believe in God in the last day and. Do good deeds, work righteousness. This is not rituals. This is actually doing righteous deeds, as in feeding the poor, taking care of uh, uh, the needy. Um, speaking kindly to mankind, holding fast to the commandments of God, being patient, um. Fighting in the cause of God. Um. Keeping fast to your oaths, honoring your oaths, striving for justice. This is all working righteousness. So whoso does this, no fear will be upon them, nor will they grieve. Doesn't say in the hereafter. This, so this means in this life and the hereafter. Now we come to the agreement. It, these agreements are highlighted in, in one after the other in chapter two. So I refer to you to, I think in the beginning of chapter two where the children of Israel are being addressed and the agreements that were made to them were. Basically reiterated by God and how they basically broke all those agreements. And uh, so we have another agreement here that was made with the children of Israel. Verse seventy, we took an agreement of the children of Israel and sent to them messengers. Whenever a messenger came to them with what their souls desired, not a faction they denied and a faction they killed. And considered there would be no means of denial, so they became blind and deaf. Then turned gods towards them, then became many among them blind and deaf, and God sees what they do. So these messengers, they were being sent to the children of Israel as a test to see whether they would hold to their agreement. Um, but they didn't see, they, they denied them and a faction among them, they denied and a faction among them, they killed. Now, my understanding is that this talk about the messengers being killed, but we shall see that in God may, God says that. Uh, I will be victorious, me and my messengers. So uh, this is talking about the factions that were inevitably. Set up when the messengers came, there was a faction of believers and there was a faction of the disbelievers. So they fought, the, the unbelievers fought the believers, uh, which was the same repeat that was going to happen. That happened with the messenger Muhammad as well, because this is. This is the same thing that's been happening over and over again. There were always two factions created when the messengers came. So they became blind and deaf. So then God turns towards them, then became many among them blind and deaf and God sees what they do. They have denied who say God is the Messiah, son of Mary. And the Messiah said, oh children of Israel, serve God, my lord and your lord. Whoso ascribes a partnership to God, him has God forbidden the garden and his shelter is the fire and for the wrongdoers, they are no helpers. So those who say that God is the Messiah, son of Mary, um, then they are wrongdoers. And the Messiah himself, he, he said that, oh children of Israel, serve God, my lord and your lord, whoso ascribes a partnership to God, him has God forbidden the garden. And has, his shelter is the fire and for the wrongdoers, they are no helpers. They have denied who say God is the third of the tree, three, and there is no God save one God. And if they disis not from so saying, they will touch those who ignore warning, among them a painful punishment. Now, obviously here it's saying God is the third of three, these people, they have denied as well. And here it says, God is the Messiah, son of Mary. So I take it to mean that they were different sects of the uh, Nasara. Uh, who, but again, is translating as Christians, uh, they were, they had different ideas about uh, Jesus. And regardless, these both things, um, if they disis not from the saying, so saying, they will touch those who ignore warning among them, a painful punishment. One thing to remember about the, those who ignore warning, Allah Zina Kafaru is that these are the people, um. It is the same to that, to you, it is the same, whether you warn them or do not warn them, they do not believe. God has, um, basically there's, they won't ever believe. So we need to understand this because. These, these, these guys, their case is closed, um. And, and we're gonna look into it a little bit more as we proceed here. Verse seventy-four, will they not then turn to God and seek his forgiveness and God is forgiving and merciful? So this is not talking about those Allah, Allah Zina Kafaru, because their, their case is sealed. This is talking about those who ascribe partnership to God. Um, they have a chance if they turn to God and seek his forgiveness. The Messiah, son of Mary, was but a messenger. Messengers had passed away before him and his mother was a woman of truth. They both ate food. See thou how we make plain the proofs to them, then see thou how they are deluded. See, this is something you can test out. You can go to Christians and you can say to them, look, you're, uh, this, this Jesus Christ that you are saying is son of God. Uh, he was but a messenger. Messengers had passed away before him and his mother was a woman of truth. They both ate food. What do you say to that? They both ate food. They, they were humans. And then you see how they are deluded. They're gonna come up with all sorts of rationalizations. For the, the delusion that they have, that Jesus Christ was not, you know, just a man. Verse seventy-six, say thou, serve you besides God, what has power over you for neither harm nor benefit? And God, he is the hearing and knowing. This is something else you can try with the Christians. Seventy-seven, say thou, oh doctor of law, exceed not bounds in your doctrine beyond the truth. And follow not the vain desires of a people who strayed before and led many astray and they strayed from the right path. See, this is the thing, the accumulation, the creation of, of religious literature. Uh, which is the same infestation in the religion of Islam. These, the, the scholars of Islam today. They follow the opinions and rulings and the ideas of men, long dead men. Who they never met, who don't know what agenda they were on, who they were working with, um. So this is what it's saying, that don't follow the vain desires of people who strayed before a long time ago. And let many astray, see? Their collections of writings, etc. And all this stuff is still leading men astray. Those among the children of Israel who ignored warning were cursed by the tongue of David and of Jesus, son of Mary, for it is that they opposed and exceeded all bounds. They forbade not one another what is perverse, but they did it. Evil was what they did. Thou seest many of them taking allies of those who ignore warning. Evil is what their souls have sent ahead for them. That God is wrought with them and in the punishment will they abide eternally. See, making friends with the unbelievers, those who ignore warning, hmm, this is a telltale sign. You should be staying clear of those people who make friends with disbelievers. And had they believed in God and the prophet or what has been sent down to him, they would not have taken them as allies, but many among them are perfidious. Thou will find the strongest of men in enmity to those who heed warning, the rabbinic Jews and the idol, idolaters. And thou will find the nearest of them in love to those who heed warning, those who say we are Christians. For it is that among them are priests and monks and they wax not proud. And when they listen to what has been sent down to the messenger, thou seest their eyes overflow with tears because of what they recognize of the truth. They say, our lord, we believe. So write thou as down among the witnesses. And why should we not believe in God and what has come to us of the truth and hope that our lord will make us enter with the righteous people? Or, or you, you could say, and why should we not believe in God and what has come to us of the truth? And we had hoped that our lord will make us enter with the righteous people. So God rewarded them for what they said with gardens beneath which rivers flow, they abiding eternally therein, and that is the reward of the doers of good. And those who ignore warning and deny our proofs, they are the companions of hell. Oh, you heed warning, forbid not the good things that God has made lawful for you and transgress not, God loves not the transgressors. And eat of what God has provided you lawful and good and be in prudent fear of God in whom you are believers. This is another favorite thing of the doctor of law, this cause of Islam. They love to forbid stuff that God has allowed. They come up with all sorts of nomenclature. They'll say, oh, it's makruh, it's, you know, it's in bad taste or you should stay away from this stuff. No. What God has allowed and forbidden, this is in the Quran, this is it. You can't, you can't add anything to it, subtract anything from it. So this is a warning to the, the believers, Ya Allah Zina Amanu, that don't forbid that good things that God has made lawful for you. God will not take you to task for the vain speech in your oaths, but he will take you to task for what you have contracted by oath. Whereof the expiation is the feeding of ten needy persons with the average of what you feed your families. Or the clothing of them or the manumission of a slave, but whoso has not the means than a fast of three days. That is the expiation of your oaths when you have sworn, but keep your oaths, thus does God make plain to his proofs that you might be grateful. Oh, you who heed warning, wine and games of chance and altars and divining arrows are an abomination of the work of the Satan. So avoid it that you might be successful. The Satan but wishes to cause between you enmity and hatred in wine and the games of chance. And to turn you away from the remembrance of God and from the duty. So will you not desist? So this, uh, wine, uh, intoxicants, games of chance, this is referring to, um. Games of wager. Um, but any game really, uh, that has an element of risk in it. Altars, you already know, Ansaab, this is idols, uh, altars, anything that is raised up, that is set up. Um, that's what the word this means, Alta, altars, and that's what the Kaaba is, the. Not the Kaaba in the Quran, the Kaaba that the Muslims have made, this stone idol that they basically take as their focus. As for the prayer ritual, uh, this is a, it's, it's an asp, because it's raised up from the ground and divining arrows. This is a practice that apparently the people during the time of Muhammad did. So these are all abomination of the work of the Satan. So word that you might be successful. The Satan, Satan but wishes to cause between you enmity and hatred in wine and the games of chance and turn you away from the remembrance of God. We all know that. Um, and obey God and obey the messenger and beware, but if you turn away, then know that upon a messenger is only the clear notification. Those who heed warning and do righteous deeds, do not wrong in what they eat when they are in prudent fear and believe and do righteous deeds. Then be in prudent fear and believe, then be in prudent fear and do righteous deeds and God loves the doers of good. Okay, so. One thing again, I wanted to bring your attention. See, it says obey God and obey the messenger. This again is, is um, taken out of context by the Muslims to say, okay, this means that we need to take the Hadith literature and follow that. But see, if you read the whole verse, it says, and beware, but if you turn away, then know that upon a messenger is only the clear notification. So that's the duty of the messenger, the clear notification, which is the delivering of the messages of God, that is the Quran. And that's what it means to obey the messenger. Oh, you who heed warning, God will try you with something of the game that your hands and your spears reach. That God might know him who fears him unseen and whoso transgresses after that for him is a painful punishment. Oh, you who heed warning, kill no game when you are forbidden and whoso of you kills intentionally, the payment is the like of what he killed from grazing livestock. Let judge it to just men from among you by an offering reaching the Kaaba or expiation, feeding needy persons or the equivalent of that in the fasting. That he might taste the evil consequence of his deed. God has pardoned what is past, but whoso returns. God will take vengeance on him and God is exalted in might and vengeful. This has to do with the people at the time of Muhammad. The location of that place is lost. Where the Kaaba was and similarly the location of the Masjid Haran is lost. So thi- this is all history, with nothing to do with us. Verse ninety-six, made lawful for you is the game of the sea and the food thereof as a provision for you and for those who travel. But forbidden to you is the game of the land so long as you are forbidden and be in prudent fear of God to whom you will be gathered. Now, if you remember the beginning of this chapter, there was an ordinance that had to do with, um. The animal, um, the, the quadrupeds, um, the cattle, what was, uh, that there was a specific, uh. There were specific stipulations in regards to the cons, uh, uh, the eating of the cattle. What was allowed. Now here we have the allowance of the game of the sea. So see, there's every, every creature in the sea is allowed. Um, again, the Muslims make a fuss about, you know, the crab being haram or makruh or whatever, or the shrimp being makruh. Doesn't say that, just says made lawful for you is the game of the sea. So it's allowed. God made the Kaaba, the inviolable house, standing for the people, the inviolable month, the offering and the necklaces. That is so that you might know that God knows what is in the heavens and what is in the earth and that God knows all things. Again, this Kaaba, the location, this was the, the forbidden house, the inviolable house. We don't know where this is. And it doesn't matter, because that time is past. Verse ninety-eight, know that God is severe in retribution and that God is forgiving and merciful. Upon the messenger is only the notification and God knows what you reveal and what you conceal. See, again, upon the messenger is only the notification and God knows what you reveal, what you conceal. That's the duty of the messenger. Verse one hundred, say thou, not the same are the bad and the good, although they impress thee the abundance of the bad. So be in prudent fear of God, oh you men of understanding, that you might be successful. Oh, you who heed warning, ask not about things which admit clear to you would distress you. But if you ask about them while the Quran is being sent down, they will be made clear to you. God has pardoned that and God is forgiving and clement. They did ask a people before you, then became deniers thereof. See, clearly, in many places in the Quran, the addressing is to the Allah Zina Amanu, those who heed warning. At the time of the messenger. This, you cannot say that this is applying to the messenger, the, the, the Allah Zina Amanu in today's. Uh, world in twenty twenty-four, because the Quran is not being sent down. That was done, it's completed, it's already sent down. So it's this an address to those people. That you should not be asking about things which if they may, may clear to you would distress you. And if you recall in chapter two, uh, there is a narrative about the children of Israel when uh, Musa told them to. uh, there is a narrative about the children of Israel when uh Musa told them to sacrifice a hafer. And then they started asking all these redundant questions, making their life more difficult by asking for details. And uh, that that's a, that's a lesson for all of us. So don't ask too much about things that if they were made sent to you would make your life difficult. Verse one oh three, God appointed not any bahira, saiba, wasilah, and ham. But those who ignore warning invent lies about God and most of them do not reason. I don't know what this means, there's a lot of theories on what this means, but nobody really knows what thi- this is. But again, you have to understand that this is talking to the people at the time of the revelation, so they knew what these things were. But God is saying that God did not appoint these things. Uh, those who ignore warning invent lies about God, so they're the ones who make lies up about God, they invent religions, they invent uh stipulations. And most of them do not reason, and when it said to them, come to what God has sent down and the and to the messenger, they say sufficient for us is that upon which we found our fathers. Even though their fathers knew not anything and were not guided. So when it said to the those who ignore warning, come to what God has sent down. Uh, and the messenger, they say sufficient, so they're not willing to abandon the then the religion they inherited. Or the practices. Verse one oh five, oh, you heed warning, upon you are your souls, whoso has gone astray cannot harm you when you are guided. To God is your return altogether, then he will inform you what you did. Oh, you heed warning, a witness between you when death approaches, one of you at the time of bequest is two just men among you. Or two others from other than yourselves, if you are traveling in the earth when the calamity of death befalls you. Detain them after the duty and they shall swear by God if you doubt. We would not sell it for a price, though he were a relative, nor will we conceal the witness of God, then would we be among the sinners. So, those who heed warning, um, they the thing is that the Quran allows that you can make a bequest, as in you can gift uh your uh wealth at the time of your death. Um, this is, this is, this is, uh, this is allowed, but also uh, the shares of the children and the relatives, they need to be uh partitioned off as well, that's a requirement, but God allows a request. Now, this bequest, my reading of this is that this needs to be done at the time of death, so there's no idea about, you know, having a will written down. And and the reason I think that's the case is because, uh, you know, a lot of times what happens is that, uh, the will almost becomes like a well, I don't wanna speculate, but here, what I'm trying to say is, is the ordinance is that at the time of your death, when your death approaches, you need to you need to get two just men among yourselves. And you need to make this bequest, and they'll be the ones who will witness, and they will be the ones who will execute it. Or two others from other than yourselves, so if you can't find two just men from among yourselves, then two others. And here it says detain them after the duty, now. My understanding here is that this duty is the requirement to make a bequest and have two witnesses available. It doesn't mean a prayer, because that makes no sense, if you're on your deathbed, you're not gonna go stand up and do a prayer. And these people might not be doing a prayer with you, because they are not from yourselves. So to me, this means that the duty is that you are, after you have selected these two men and you have made the bequest. Then you need to detain them after the duty, and they shall swear by God, God, if you doubt, we would not sell it for a price, though he were a relative, nor would we conceal a witness of God. Then would we be among the sinners, so that's what needs to be done. But if it be found that they have laid claim in sin, then two others shall stand in their place. Excuse me, the two foremost from those that lay claim, and let them swear by God. Our witness is worthier than their witness, and we have not transgressed, then would we be among the wrongdoers. So basically, this is a check, so the 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 these two witnesses, you know, fear that there'll be other men who might contradict their testimony. That will tend to them bearing witness properly or fearing that oats will be taken after their oats, and be in prudent fear of God and listen. And God guides not the perfidious people. The day God gathers the messengers, he will say, what was their response to you? They will say, we have no knowledge, thou art the knower of the unseen realms. Now we're gonna see a specific example of this, that the messengers had no knowledge. This again flies in the face of the Muslim's idea that Muhammad is listening, or he's uh, he's here somehow and he is listening to what's going on and he's aware. This is, again, Muslims need to read the Quran carefully. Verse one ten, when God will say, oh, Jesus, son of Mary, remember thou my favor to thee and to thy mother. When I strengthen thee with the spirit of holiness, thou speaking to men in the cradle and in maturity. And when I thought thee the writ and the wisdom and the Torah and the gospel. And when thou didst create of clay the likeness of a bird by my leave, and blewest into it and it became a bird by my leave. And thou didst heal the blind and the leper by my leave, and when thou broughtest forth the dead by my leave. And when I restrained the children of Israel from thee, when thou camest to them with clear signs. And those who ignored warning among them said, this is only obvious sorcery. And when I revealed to the disciples, believe in me and my messenger, they said, we believe, and bear thou witness that we are submitting. When the disciples said, oh, Jesus, son of Mary, is thy Lord able to send down upon us a table spread from the sky? He said, be in prudent fear of God if you be believers. They said. We wish to eat thereof and our hearts to be at rest, and to know that thou hast spoken truth to us, and to be among the witnesses there too. Jesus, son of Mary, said, oh, God, our Lord, send thou down upon us a table spread from the sky. To be a feast for us, for the first of us and the last of us, and a proof from thee, and give thou as provision, and thou art the best of providers. If you remember this mirrors Mary, when Zakaria came to her uh uh in the chamber and he said, where, where, where does this food come from, and she said, uh, it is from God. Uh, God gives his provision to whom he wills. And also here, uh, we have the word Eid. See, it says, uh, this, uh, and send thou upon us a table spread from the sky to be a feast for us. This is Lana Eden, so this is the, this is the instance of Eid here. Something interesting. God said, I will send it down upon you, then whoso denies thereafter among you, him will I punish with a punishment, wherewith I will not punish any among all mankind. And when God will say, oh, Jesus, son of Mary, didst thou say to men, take me and my mother as two gods besides God? He will say, glory be to thee, it was not for me to say that to which I had no right, if I had said it, then thou wouldst have known it. Thou knowest what is in my soul, and I know not what is in thy soul, thou art the knower of the unseen realms. See, it's just straight up, he denies this, because if you remember, he said to the children of Israel earlier in this chapter, he said, serve Lord. Serve God, my Lord and your Lord, so he's confirming this here, he says, uh, glory be to thee, it was not to, I, if I said it. See, it confirms it here, verse one seventeen, I said not to them but what thou commandest me, serve God, my Lord and your Lord. And I was a witness to them while I was among them, but when thou tookst me, thou was the watcher over them, and thou art witness to all things. Now, this part is very interesting, see, it confirms what Jesus said earlier in his life, he's, he confirms it on the, in the hereafter. And that's what, when the Quran says that it's a confirmation, uh, of what is, uh, within its scope. It's, it's what it's saying is that it's giving you, uh, things that are being confirmed later on somewhere else in the text, so it's confirming itself. That's the beauty of the Quran, it confirms itself. Verse one eighteen, if thou punish them, they are thy servants, and if thou forgive them, thou are the exalted and might the wise. This is the intercession of Jesus, see, Christians make a big fuss about the intercession of Jesus, this is it, this is the intercession. And the intercession of Muhammad is also recorded in the Quran. Uh, in which he says, uh, my Lord, my people have abandoned, uh, took this Quran as a thing abandoned. That's what Muhammad will say on the day of judgment, that's it, very, 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 uh, cautionary. God will say, this is the day in which their truthfulness benefits the truthful, they have gardens beneath which rivers flow, they abiding eternally therein forever. God is pleased with them and they pleased with him, that is the great achievement. To God belongs the dominion of the heavens and the earth, and what is in them, and he is over all things, powerful. If you remember, God does not forgive ascribing a partnership to him, so. God just says, this is the day in which their truthfulness, those who were truthful, those who believed in one God in the last day. This will benefit, this day, it benefits their, their truth, their truth benefits the truthful, this is it. If you ascribe a partnership to God, you're finished. Anyway, that finishes up chapter five, yeah, chapter five, we're gonna continue on since we have some more time. We're getting with chapter six, this is still part of the Alim Lam meme, uh, series, Al Kitab. In the name of God, the Almighty and the Merciful, praise belongs to God who created the heavens and the earth and made darkness and light. And the light, then those who ignore warning ascribe equals to their Lord. So one of the things that the, those who ignore warning do is that they ascribe equals to their Lord. This is, uh, I want you to pay attention to those who ignore warning here, because there there's a lot of things here that that tells you who they are, what they are, what their characteristics are, this is one of them. Then those who ignore warning ascribe equals, so they, they believe they are equals to God, the God who created the heavens and the earth. He it is that created you from clay, then you decreed a term, and a stated term is with him, then do you doubt? You see how it shifted to, do you doubt? And before it was talking about those who ignore warning, the reason is that those who ignore warning, it is the same whether you warn them, do not warn them, you do not believe, see, this is the thing, so. There really is no point in in addressing these people, these people are lost. So, uh, here it's talking to some other group that might believe. Right now, they're doubting, so, he it is that created you from clay, then you decreed a term, and a stated term is with him, then do you doubt? So God created us from clay. So there's three different types, there's the the creation from clay, there's a creation from sperm, and then there's a creation from, uh, the clot, okay? Um, this is the creation from clay, this is the first creation, then he decreed a term. This is the term that man will live out his life, this is the term, everyone is given a term, he comes in this world. Uh, he's born in this world and there's a, there's a limited time that he has, this is already decided. This stated term is with him, so God knows when he was gonna cause him to, cause the person to die. So all this God is doing, and you doubt, you doubt God. And he is God in the heavens and in the earth, he knows your inward and your outward, and he knows what you earn. And there comes to them no proof among the proofs of their Lord, but they turn away they're from, this proof is talking about the Quran. They turn away they're from, the Quran is only one proof, see, the Quran itself references the proofs of God, which you see every day. Uh, the sun and the moon, the the heavens and the earth, all of these are proofs, but this specifically is talking about the Quran. So they turn away they're from, so they have denied the truth when it came to them, and they will come to them a report of that whereat they mocked. So now this report. You could take it to me in two ways, as in a confirmation will come later on, on the day of judgment when all will be revealed. Uh, the other way to take it is that the Quran, this chapter itself contains reports of of the people who mocked. And what happened to them, and I think that's what this is saying, because right after that, it jumps into talking about the people that God destroyed. To whom the messengers also came with the truth. Verse six, have they not considered how many a generation we destroyed before them? We established them in the earth as we have not established you, and we've sent the sky upon them in abundant rains and made the rivers flow beneath them. Then we destroyed them for their transgressions and produced after them another generation. Now, see, this is one of the things that, uh, in this day and age, we're so brainwashed into thinking that we're the best, you know, we're the most technologically advanced and we have, you know, subdued the earth, but, uh, the Quran paints a different picture, the men before us, the civilization that came before us. They settle in the earth longer than us and they impacted the earth more than us. Um, and their buildings are still standing, I mean, you have the pyramids, right? And also, uh, the technological marvels of the Romans. There's other things as well, a lot of the stuff is hidden as well, they hide stuff, anyway, but it says we established them in the earth as we have not established you, so these men, they did all that, but they did, God destroyed them for their transgressions. This is the report that they are mocking. And had we sent down upon thee a writ upon parchment, then they had touched it with their hands, those who ignore warning would have said, this is only obvious sorcery. So it, it doesn't matter, see, if, even if God has sent down a writ upon parchment, it was written down, and they had touched it with their hands, then those who ignore warning. The allazina kafadu would still have said, this is only obvious sorcery, and the word sorcery in the Quranic context means uh, something that's turned about, that, uh, causes you to, uh, basically, the the twisting of reality, the um, it's it's closer to, uh, illusion, so they they would, they would still consider it to not be real. And they say, oh, that an angel had but been sent down upon him, but had we sent down an angel, then the matter would have been concluded. Then would they not have been reprieved? This is talking about the allazina kafadu, see, they come up with all this stuff, but by the end of the day, they don't believe. Doesn't matter what sign they see, because their hearts are sealed, this in itself is a proof for the believers. Okay, and God is saying, had we sent down an angel, the matter would have been concluded, this obviously referring to the angel of death, when he comes, then, you know, your soul is seized, and then the matter is over. Um, they would not be reprieved any longer. And had we made him an angel, we would have made him a man and covered him, them in what they do cover, basically, they would, they're basically that they are so confused that we would have covered them in more confusion. And messengers were mocked before thee, then they surrounded those who derided them, that whereat they mocked. See news of what they mocked. Say thou, travel in the earth and see how is the final outcome of the deniers. Say thou, to whom belongs what is in the heavens and the earth, say thou, to God, he has prescribed upon himself mercy. He will bring you all together to the day of resurrection, whereof there is no doubt, those who have lost their souls, they do not believe. And to him belongs what rests in the night and the day, and he is the hearing, the knowing. Say thou, is it other than God I am to take as ally, the creator of the heavens and the earth, and who feeds but is not fed? Say thou, I have been commanded to be the first among those who submit, and be thou not among the idolaters. Say thou, I fear if I should oppose my Lord, the punishment of a tremendous day. This obviously references verse one here, see, the creator of the heavens and the earth, how does um, the messenger know this, because God is commanding him to say it, but also you have this at the beginning, see, praise belongs to God. Who created the heavens and the earth, and see, it also connects to those who ignore warning, they ascribe equals to their Lord, so. That is what mushrikin is, these are those who ascribe a partnership to God, they ascribe equals to God. So be thou not among the idolaters, or the mushrikin. Say thou, I fear if I should oppose my Lord, the punishment of a tremendous day. From whom it is averted that day, he will have had mercy upon him, and that is the clear achievement. And if good, and if God touches thee with affliction, there is none, there is no remover, they all save he. And if he touches thee with good, then is he over all things powerful? And he is the conqueror over his servants, and he is the wise, the aware. Say thou, what thing is greatest in witness, say thou, God is witness between me and you. And this Quran has been revealed to me that I might warn you thereby and whom it reaches. Do you bear witness that there are other gods with God, say thou, I bear not witness, say thou. He is but one God, and I am quit of that to which you ascribe a partnership. What thing is greatest in witness, God is witness between me and you, and this Quran has been revealed to me that I might warn you thereby, see, Muhammad only received the Quran. This is another thing that Muslims, you know, they love to keep on coming up with new explanations as to why to follow the Hadith literature, one of the things they say is that Muhammad was given wisdom, which is something special, which was something separate from the Quran, and this is preserved in the Hadith, no. Muhammad only received the Quran, see, the only thing that was real to him was the Quran, and he was commanded to follow it. This is very key, see, the Quran dispels all this stuff that the Muslims come up with. Verse twenty, those to whom we gave the writ, recognize it as we recognize their sons, those who lose their souls, they do not believe. So, those whom we gave the writ, they recognize the truth, that there is one God. And there, there's those who lose their souls, they do not believe in this. And who is more unjust than he who invents a lie about God or denies his proofs, the wrongdoers are not successful. The scholars of Islam, they love to invent lies about God, this is through the Hadith literature. The only thing we know about God is through the revelation he sent down the Quran, that's it. And the day we gather them all together, then will we say to those who ascribe a partnership, where are your partners that you claimed? Then will their means of denial be but that they will say, by God, our Lord, we were not idolaters. See, those, the mushrikin, they don't understand that they are idolaters. I used to think about this verse a lot, because, um, you know, I would, I thought those people who are ascribing partnership to God, they they know that they're ascribing partnership to God, but actually, if you actually listen to some Christians going on about the religion, a lot of times they'll say, we believe in the one God. They don't even seeing that they are ascribing partnership to God, as in they believe that Jesus Christ is the son of God. And that's ascribing a partnership to God, but they don't see that, see, so. So you have to be very careful, um, that there's only one God. He has ultimate authority. He is the. Guide, he is the, uh, giver giver of ordinance. He is the one who created, he is the one who causes us harm or good. This is all attributes of God. If you share in these attributes with anyone else, that's ascribing a partnership to God. If you share, if you make anyone share with gods, any partner, uh, attributes, that's ascribing a partnership to God. Okay, here it says, see thou how will, how they will lie against themselves. Um, I I'm more more of the interpretation that this means, see thou how they lie against themselves. And straight from them is what they invented. See, this is the thing, that these people, they are claiming that they believe in one God. Uh, when they're actually ascribing a partnership to God, so God is saying, see thou, see, see how they are lying to themselves. You see how the Christians are lying in themselves and straight from them is what they invented. See, their partners won't help them on the day of judgment. And this is something that the Muslims and the Christians believe that their messengers or prophets will help them. They won't. And among them are some who listen to thee, but we have placed upon their hearts coverings lest they should understand it and in their ears deafness. And if they see every proof, they will not believe in it. When they have come to thee, they argue against thee, those who ignore warning, saying this is only legends of the former peoples. And they forbid it and are far from it, and they destroy, not save themselves, but they perceive not. See, there is fate is sealed, those who ignore warning, Alazina Kafaru. God has placed in their ears deafness, and if they see every proof, they will not under, they will not believe in it. So it doesn't matter if they listen to God's message or not. And if thou could see when they are set before the fire, then they will say, would that we were sent back? Then would we not deny the proofs of our Lord, but be among the believers? The truth is, what they concealed before will be clear to them. And if they be sent, if they were sent back, they would return to what they were forbidden, and they are liars. Now we're gonna look at, we're gonna see what they hid. What they concealed before, what what is it that they're concealing and also. Uh, what is, what is the thing that they are going to return to that's forbidden to them if God sends them back? They'll show up later. And they say, there is only our life in the world and we will not be raised. So this is the first thing, see? They conceal the fact that they will be raised again. They they know in their hearts of heart that, uh. That they will be raised up and also that God has ultimate power. And that's what, one of the challenges in here, we're gonna read, is that, uh, is that they are asked. Who will you truthfully call to when you are in trouble? Cause they will call to God. That's the truth they're concealing. And if thou could see when they are set before their Lord, he will say, is then this not the truth? They will say, rarely by our Lord, he will say, then taste the punishment for what you denied. They have lost to deny the meeting with God when the hour has come upon them unexpectedly. They will say, oh, I regret over what we neglected concerning it, and they will bear their burdens upon their backs. In truth, evil is what they will bear. And the life of this world is only play and diversion, and the abode of the hereafter is better for those of prudent fear. Will you then not use reason? We know that grieves thee what they say, and they deny not thee, but the wrongdoers reject the proofs of God. And messengers were denied before thee, but they were patient over what, over that wherein they were denied and hindered. Until our help came to them, and there is none to change the words of God, and there has already come to thee some of the reports of the emissaries. This is the words of God that no one can change, as in, uh. Me, uh, uh, we will be the, me and my messengers will be the victors. Ultimate success will will be to to God and his messengers. And if their ration be hard for thee, if thou art able to seek a tunnel in the earth or a stairway in the sky to bring that to them a proof. And had God willed, he would have gathered them together to the guidance, so be thou not of the ignorant. See, Muhammad is being told to go get, to seek a tunnel in the earth or stairway in the sky and bring them a proof. Um, but ultimately God guides whom he wills. And he couldn't bring any proofs. They respond only those who hear and the dead. God raises them, then to him will they be returned. And they say, oh, that a proof had but been sent down upon him from his Lord. Say thou, God is able to send down a proof, but most of them know not. See, this proof is actually talking about destruction. Um, that's gonna come later. This is the proof, that the only proof they're gonna get is the is 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 the hour. And there is no creature in the earth, nor bird flying on its wing, save their communities, the likes of you. We have not neglected anything in the writ, then to their Lord will they be gathered. See, everything is in the writ. And those who deny our proofs are deaf and dumb in darkness. Whom God wills, he leads him astray, and whom he wills, he sets him on a straight path. Say thou, have you considered, the punishment of God comes upon you or the hour comes upon you, will you call to other than God if you be truthful? The truth is, to him you will call, and he will remove that for which you call to him if he wills, and you will forget that to which you ascribe a partnership. See, this is referring back to the the truth that they concealed. That this is the truth. God is the ultimate protector, the ultimate helper. He is the only one who can help us. So this is a question that needs to be put to the Alazina Kafaru. Is that, have you considered, if the punishment of God comes upon you or the hour comes upon you, who will you call to other than God if you be truthful? And we have sent to communities before thee, then we took them with affliction and adversity, that they might humble themselves. And, oh, that when a disaster came upon them, they had but humbled themselves, but their hearts hardened and the Satan made afraid of them what they were doing. Now. They didn't humble themselves when the messengers came and, uh. Basically, they 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 stayed on their path. They, you know, whatever comes, we're gonna keep going. Where we, how, you know, how we're doing things, we're gonna keep doing them. Um, because the shatan, the Satan had made fear to them what they were doing. They they. A lot of times you'll see that it's actually talking about, you see these people in in your, in your life who. No matter what disaster touches them, they still continue on in the same way. They don't step back and think about, okay, why did this happen to me? Did, did I do something wrong? Did I displease my lord? Maybe I should change my, my habits or my actions. No, they don't. They just continue on. So when they forgot that whereof they had been reminded, we opened upon them the gates of all things, when they had exalted in what they were given, we took them suddenly and then. Were they in despair and cut off was the root of the people. Who did wrong, and praise belongs to God, the Lord of all creation. Sorry about that. Say thou, have you considered, if God takes away your hearing and your sight and seals your heart? Who is the God, save God, who will restore it to you? See thou how we expound the proofs, then they turn away. See, this is what happens. This is the Alazina Kafaru, their hearts and their hearing and sight and is is. Taken away and God seals their hearts. So this is really the punishment of God. So the question is, who, if this happens to you, who will restore this back to you? No one. This is also a threat. Say thou, have you considered, if the punishment of God comes to you unexpectedly or with warning, will there be destroyed, save the wrongdoing people? Have you considered? That if it this happens, then what what your, what your state, what your state's gonna be? And we send the emissaries only as bearers of glad tidings and warnings. And whoso believes and makes right, no fear will be upon them, nor will they grieve. See, that's the messenger's job. Bears of glad tidings and warnings. And whoso believes and makes right, believes in God in the last day and does right deeds. See, improves himself. Uh, this word, Aslah means to reform. No fear will be upon them, nor will they grieve. See, not talking about converting to a religion. To better yourself. And those who deny our proofs, the punishment will touch them because they were perfidious. Say thou, I say not to you, I possess the treasuries of God, or I know the unseen, nor do I say to you, I am an angel. I follow only what is real to me. Say thou, are the blind and the seeing equal? Will you then not take thought? See, again, Muhammad was being told to say, I I don't have any treasures. I don't know the unseen, as in I don't know the future. I only follow what is real to me. Whatever Muhammad was given, this is it, the Quran. And those who who follow the Quran, who read the Quran, they are the seeing and the blind are those who ignore the Quran. And warn thou thereby those who fear that they will be gathered to their lord. They have no ally or intercessor besides him, that they might be in prudent fear. And drive thou not away those who call to their lord morning and evening, seeking his face. Not upon these, anything of their account, and nothing of thy account is upon them, for thou wouldst. For thou shouldst drive them away and be of the wrongdoers. And thus we subjected some of them to means of denial by others, that they might say, are these they whom God has favored among us? Does then God not best know the grateful? And when they come to thee, those who believe in our proofs, say thou, peace be upon you, Lord, your Lord has prescribed for himself mercy. That whoso of you does evil through ignorance, then turns to repentance after that and makes right. He is forgiving and merciful, and thus we set out in detail the proofs, and that the path of the lawbreakers might be made manifest. Say thou, I have been forbidden to serve those to whom you call besides God. Say thou, I do not follow your vain desires, else had I gone astray and would not be of the guided. Say thou, I am upon clear evidence from my lord, and you have denied it. I have not that which you seek to hasten. Judgment is but for God. He relays the truth and he is the best to decide. Say thou, had I what you seek to hasten. The matter would have been concluded between me and you, and God best knows the wrongdoers. And with him are the keys of the unseen, and none knows them but he, and he knows what is in the land and the sea. And not a leaf falls, but he knows it, nor is there a grain in the darknesses of the earth, and nothing moist or dry, dry, but is in a clear writ. And he it is that takes you at night and knows what you earn by day, then he raises you up therein, that there be fulfilled a stated term. And to him will you be returned, then he will inform you what you did. See, a stated term, God has 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 allotted us a time, uh, on the earth. And he is the conqueror over his servants, and he sends guardians over you. When that has come to one of you, our messengers take him and they fail not. Then are they sent back to God, their true protector, in truth, he, his is the judgment. And he he is the swiftest of account takers. Alright, so we're gonna stop at verse sixty-three, sixty-two here because we're already one hour mark and, uh. Yeah, we're gonna pick it up from there, God will lay next time. Anyway, that's it for now. Peace and blessings be upon you.